Madam President, we are ready to go live.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020 Regular School Board Meeting. All board members are present with the exception of Board Member Star Marsette, and as soon as she joins, I will acknowledge that. I actually do see her online right now, so all board members are now present. Thank you. And Board Member Bellamy, would you please assist us in the flag salute?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Please stand.
I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020 Regular School Board Meeting. All board members are-
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, the Board is honored to acknowledge that our community resides on the traditional land of the Dunina people, both past and present. It is with gratitude that we honor the land itself and the people who have cared for it throughout the generations. We want to welcome you to our virtual meeting during this COVID-19 crisis, and thank you for supporting the work of the Anchorage School District. The mission of this district is educating all students for success in life. And at this time, I would like a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam President, this is Margot. Member Bellamy, I move to approve the agenda.
Member Holloman, second.
Thank you. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Member Hildy, sorry, I had to switch video screens for you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to move to amend the agenda to add funding and installation of joint assembly and school district signs to non-action items.
And is there a second for that? I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Oh, okay. Well, it just came up on installation and just making sure the funding line item's in the right spot. So rather than, like, just if the Board's going to discuss it, we just have to discuss it out in the public. So I just want to make sure it's clear and there's no liability issues. And it's a great, you know, positive thing to do. I just want to make sure, dot the i's.
Okay. So we have an amended agenda. Or a motion to amend the agenda. Are there any other modifications or requests? Member Donnelly.
Can I have a further explanation of what this item is?
There is a, there's been a conversation about banners that were purchased between the Assembly and the school district and the installation of those banners around town. And there was some conversation about it, and Member Hildy has requested to have it as a non-agenda item to discuss out in the public. Does that answer your question, Member Donnelly?
Not being privy to those conversations, it's fine. I'll learn from the item, I guess, when we discuss it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Not seeing any other questions or hands. I'm so much better at the blue hands on the side, so I don't have to switch between videos for board members, but not seeing any. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote to approve the amended agenda. Katie, if you would.
Member Donnelly.
Yes.
Member Hildy.
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member President Vekalas?
Yes.
All right, and the agenda is approved as modified with seven yes and zero nays. Next up on the agenda is our focus on staff and students. And the first item is the 2020 Alaska School Nutrition Association Manager of the Year, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Bishop for more explanation.
Thank you, Madam President. And just for the audience to know that Focus on Staff and Students is a time that the Board has set aside during its meeting to recognize and acknowledge the people who make ASD great. And the first person is an employee. Her name is Michelle Powers. And we'll get her hooked up real fast. That was the wrong PowerPoint, so we'll get the right one. Here we go. Focus on Staff and Students and the Community. First person, there she is, Michelle Powers.
There she is.
The 2020 Alaska School Nutrition Association Manager of the Year. She just was awarded this last week after our last meeting, so this is a new award. And it recognizes excellence in managing and overseeing student nutrition programs, student nutrition professionals, and serving students. She was nominated for this for outstanding service to ASD and the community at large. She's worked long and hard to operationalize and implement a plan to open the 26 food-serving sites during the COVID lockdown and served three-fourths, 750,000 meals, or three-fourths of a million meals, meals to needy families to date today. She's been a dedicated professional in student nutrition for over 15 years, and the Board would like to congratulate Michelle on her award. Her dedication is outstanding, and it's a service to students that we appreciate, which also makes ASD great.
Great.
Great. All right. Thank you, Michelle Powers.
Congratulations, Michelle.
Additionally, each spring, we invite our retirees who have had over 25 years of service to our board meetings, our last board meetings of the season. And this year, of course, COVID has impacted that, and we are inviting them this time via Zoom, as well to recognize one of the most ways, honoring way of someone and recognizing them and treating someone with dignity is actually to call their name and call them by their name. And so we want to take the time during this meeting today to call the names of the people in our community who have provided service to the young people of our city for many, many years, as you will see. They are retiring at the close of this school year, June 30th. There are 71 members of this ASD family-
Wow.
-who have dedicated themselves in this way. And these employees have supported students and their coworkers in many areas of the district, from teaching and counseling to support staff, as well as student nutrition operations and IT. Their expertise, compassion, hard work, and commitment are deeply appreciated, and they've made a huge difference in the lives of many students. With that, I'll turn it over to the Board.
Ms. Janie Booter with 38 years, Lori King, 37 years, Joyce Knight, 37 years, Sabina Rollins, 36 years, Lawrence Day, 36 years, Karen Karsnia, 35 years, Sally Quinto, 35 years, Donna Keith, 34 years, Gwendolyn Holt, 34 years, Edwin Lee, 33 years.
Samuel Oliveri, 33 years, Patricia Clem, 33 years, Kathy Woodall, 33 years, Vicki Curtis, 32 years, Kenton Sims, 32 years, Joyce Banks, 32 years, Catherine McBride, 32 years, Lonnie Roylance, 32 years, Elizabeth Ogry, 31 years, Todd Sauer, 31 years.
I'm done mute myself. Christopher Yelverton, 31 years, Michael Higbee, 31 years, Pamela Stephan, 31 years, Frank Newman, 30 years, Cynthia Golab, 30 years, Teresa Thomas, 30 years, Carolyn Bridges, also 30 years, Benjamin Coulson, 30 years, Mike Woods, 30 years, and Mary Janice, 30 years.
Cynthia Manns, 30 years, Kimberly Mungo, 30 years, Elizabeth Hunzucker, 30 years, Mary Brewer, 30 years, Lucy Thysis, 30 years, Pamela Butcher, 30 years, Linda Ortiz, 29 years, Paulette Garrett, 29 years, Kelsey Chalker, 29 years, Stephanie LaPointe, 29 years.
You're on mute, Star.
Okay, now I'm going to say I'm going to apologize if I don't pronounce your name correctly, but the gratefulness and the meaning is there. So Michelle Cindy Citi, 29 years, Rhonda Schmidt, 29 years, Mary Ann DePriest, 29 years, Ness, 28 years, because I'm not going to insult you, I don't know how to say that first name, Holly Atkins, 28 years, Robert Atkins II, 28 years, Cynthia Burkett, 28 years, Shelley James, 28 years, Rowena Corello, 28 years, and Pamela Rettman, 28 years.
Andy or Alicia? Are you, is that one of you?
Then I can start here.
Yep.
Murray Miller Russell, 28 years, Beverly Cornidge, 28 years, Christopher Wager, 28 years, Tracy Kayes, 27 years, Roy Groover, 27 years, Nankyun Yun, 27 years, Brenda Stevens, 26 years, Cheryl Andra, 26 years, Roberta Struck, 26 years, Teresa Myers, 26 years.
Jane Mallor, 26 years, Anne Morgaster, 26 years, Barbara Yelverton, 26 years, Nestor Cruz, 25 years, Susan Edgin, 25 years, Joseph Lebal, 25 years, Donell Jeffson, 25 years, Artith Robertson, 25 years, James Young, 25 years, Rebecca Finch, 25 years, and Gwen Houck, 25 years.
To all of our retirees, congratulations on your retirement, and we wish you the best in your future endeavors. Retirement will surely offer you many new opportunities, which I know you will embrace wholeheartedly, just as you did in ASD. Thank you again for everything you have done for students and all of us here at the district, as well as the school board. We wish you many years of joy in the next chapter of your lives. Thank you, and would the Board join me, because you make ASD great. Thank you.
Oh, that is so wonderful. Next up on our agenda, we have our Board Conference and Committee Reports. I do not believe that any committees have met, but if each committee chair would please remind the public when your next committee meeting is, that would be super fantastic. And I'll start with Finance with Board Member Marsette.
It will be before our next board meeting on May 16th at 3:30.
We'll go June 16th, and yes.
Yeah, we will. Boy, it's flying.
Perfect. And Governance, Board Member Hildy.
Oh, thank you. Well, I gave it last week, but the report was attached this week, so if you had any questions, that would be a good time to ask. And then if you are presenting at our next committee meeting, if you want to send anything ahead of time, like if you have a five-minute update and you want to just type it and let people read it beforehand, that's also an option. And our next meeting, I thought it was the 9th, but did somebody just say the 16th?
Hers is the 9th.
Okay, good. Okay, I was confused for a second. So yeah, it's June 9th at 3:30, so see you then.
Perfect. And Communications, Board Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Communications Committee will meet next Tuesday, the 9th, June 9th, at 4:30.
All right. Thank you to all of our chairs and all the work you're continuing to do. Next up on the agenda is goal monitoring, and it is, our topic is going to be graduation and year-end data, and I will turn this over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President and Board, and I wanted to share again that we are selecting this opportunity to provide this goal monitoring while it's not in the formal Destination 2020 Goals. We pivoted a little bit in regard to COVID and are updating the Board on some of the outcomes during the last nine weeks. This report will be presented by Dr. Stock, and it was looking at the question the Board had in regard to the slide perhaps, or the delta that might exist between last year, year's end, 2019, and this year's end in 2020 for our students in high school. The data that you will see is comparing those two years and answering that question. But as you see it, and in light of the conversations during the work session, as well as really what's, it was happening in our world, we do in ASD as well have a gap in our student outcomes. And this is shared, and it has remained over these two years. And so as you see the data, we're answering the question asked, but it also, like any study of data, provides an opportunity to ask new questions. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Stock.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, and members of the Board. Good evening. So we have a very brief report tonight because it's kind of a culmination of the whole pandemic work that happened in the fourth quarter. And so we've got a few data points to share with you. We've kind of made a pivot away from this idea of trying to track engagement through logins and through, you know, work submitted. And so now we're getting closer to outcome monitoring, because now we're, at least, we're looking at the outputs, if you will, from our students. And so to answer the Board's question about how do we perceive this pandemic affecting graduation and/or end-of-the-year, fourth-quarter grades, et cetera. And so this first slide represents the percentage of students by grade level who had an F on their transcript at the final end of the semester. And so it might be important to just kind of point out, the transcript piece is the, is sort of the official culmination, if you will, of the whole semester, whereas grades can be individually tracked all along the way, but then when we get to the transcript, it becomes, over time, the official record going forward. Now, there are students who are still engaged, we'll show that slide in a minute, in completing that fourth quarter, because, because of the pandemic, students who had Fs were given an opportunity to continue that work to try to make, make a difference here with the unusual teaching and learning environment that we had. So as you can see, the red numbers represent those at between 2018, 19 to 2019, 20, where there was an increase in the percentage of students who had Fs. And you'll notice that the, the difference is not extreme. On the far right, you'll see the N, or the number of students that that represents. So looking at all students, you'll see 1,988 students represented. And of those students, those are the percentage of students who had an F on their transcript at the end. So if you can look down, you'll see about a 1% to 2%, sometimes as much as close to 3% difference in terms of last year to this year, but mostly running around that 1.5% difference in terms of slightly increase in Fs until you get to the senior year. And that one was interesting. So we actually had a drop in the percentage of students who had a final F at the senior level on their, on their transcript at the end of the nine weeks. And so when we ever get this data, you know, we often say that data doesn't really, is not intended to answer questions. It usually raises new and different questions, and that's the point. And so one of the questions we ask here is, why would seniors actually drop? So we did some digging around and just asking some folks who are closer to the, the schools themselves. And some of the anecdotal information coming forward was this. Many of the seniors, when given the opportunity to go in in an asynchronous online environment and rock through all their assignments and get that stuff and move on with their lives, many of them chose to do that, because now, instead of a time and seat-based environment, they actually had an environment where they controlled their time usage, they controlled when they did their assignments, et cetera. And so many of them evidently wanted to move on with their senior year and get things done. So you'll see 139 seniors still had an F at the end. Now, we still have credit recovery going on, and we still have extended time, of course, going on. So those numbers will shift as we go. Next slide. And this one, we get at that equity question that Dr. Bishop alluded to. And this is of vital interest to everyone in our community about how our students of color and our other students are doing with regards to their work on these Fs. And so if you go down the list again, if you see green, it means there's actually an improvement from last year to this year. And if you see green, there's an improvement. If you see red, they actually increased in the percentage of students who were getting an F. You'll notice the most unusual one was the American Indian. There were 209 students in the high schools that have that ethnic choice chosen in the software programs at Q. And you'll notice a huge drop there in terms of Fs. If you go all the way down the list, you'll see the, the difference between the economically disadvantaged and non-economically disadvantaged students. Now, this is of great interest to us, because we all know that poverty does have an impact at some level, at least correlated with success in school. It doesn't define it, it's not cause and effect, but it, they're related. They go together, it seems, and this kind of demonstrates that. But what's interesting to all of us is that the difference between 1819 and 1920 is not great in either one of them. And so what that implies to us is that the pandemic wasn't the great leveraging point that created inequities. Inequities already existed. And what this did was simply carry that inequity into the next environment, which, so there's good news and bad news to that. The good news is that the pandemic itself, and the fact that we had to go to a remote instructional environment, didn't, on its face, create even greater inequities. What it did was carry on the inequities that were already in place. And so that's kind of at least a non-scientific takeaway from, from that data. So with that, the next slide. So, so in terms of summer choices, we've got a lot of offerings going on in the summer school environment. So in the extended year, there are about 1,400 roughly students who are taking extended-year courses. So some of those students may have had more than one F, so they may be extending their year in more than one course. So there are currently 2,222 courses being taken in an extended environment where students are trying to clean up those Fs. In high school, we have 2,559 courses, and you can go down and see at the bottom, we've switched from courses to students. So we don't track those as specific courses at the middle school and the elementary, but you can see that the greatest number of students and families are getting the paper pencil packets right now. And they also, the elementary math whiz and Lexia turned out to be a pretty popular piece, partly because many of the students and families were already familiar with it and had access to it, and, and they could continue that work in the summer. So with that, that is the, the report we have right now for sort of what we would call our version of, of outcome monitoring. So next slide would be just for discussions.
Thank you. And I do see Board Member Hildy's hand raised.
Oh, thank you. So my question is on, you know, the WHO, who we're talking about. When we're looking at the groups broken down, part of it is just helping me understand, I think somebody's told this to me before, it's like a federal requirement on how we group students, but if I'm looking at Alaska Native or Black demographic, like, the numbers are really low versus two or more races, 5,000-plus students. I find that number really hard to use if it's going to be such a low percentage, like for Alaska Native. And I know this has come up before. What was that, was it like the RISE or ARISE when that group was doing work, you know, that was a concern of theirs? So is there a way-
All right.
-to get better WHO? And then I appreciate the economically disadvantaged versus non-economically disadvantaged. I think that's very useful data, and kind of tells me more than the breakup part really does, given some of the two or more races classification.
I can start with a little explanation, and that's correct. As time moves on, we have this, as you can see, a beautiful country that's, you know, mixed in beautiful races and new races. So one of the things that CITC has done, to your point, with ARISE has actually ended, but they, in some of writing their new grants, when they write a grant for their student population, they, they combine two or more races and Alaska natives. And we're starting to see that more and more with different groups and entities, United Way and others, that, that the two or more races is linked with others automatically in regard to servicing and writing grants and providing data. So that's a good, particular point that you picked out. But again, these are the selections that come with our federal grants, and those entitlement grants that we receive, Title I and things like that, are free and reduced lunch. And so, and they are self-reported. So this is the identity of our students or their parents when they register them, how they would like to identify themselves.
I'd also like to point out, there is a typo on the first line regarding all students. And if you're looking for the N, if you scroll to the screen before that, it appears to be correct on the, that one right there that shows all grade levels, there's all students. So that might be, you can see the 12,215 high school students represented, so.
Thank you.
For those of you who are really looking at numbers, I know some of you like to look at, and go, that didn't make sense. So thanks for pointing that out, one of our team members here.
Thank you.
Member Bellamy, what was your second question? Maybe Mark can answer that.
No, you're just saying that I appreciate the, using the number, the economically disadvantaged versus non-economically. I think that's a very useful number that, where our demographic data has some imprecision. That one, I think, helps us target, how can we best get the needs to students met?
We agree, and that's why we've internally done a number of things, trying to look at various kinds of regression analysis work, and trying to look at what we, what we know about the effects of these things. And, and the main thing that we're interested in is approving outcomes for students. That's what it's always about. It has very little to do with, you know, ourselves as adults, other than how we impact those students. And so we still have inequities. Our goal is to reduce those inequities through any work and effort that we can at our levels. And, and one of the key points is that we don't usually create totally unique programming based on student groups. We often try to create programming for all students and find out where they fit in there to get the remediation and help they need.
Thank you. One of the things that I was doing the quick math on when you're talking about numbers is, to Member Hildy's, I think that she pointed out, the economically disadvantaged, that was an increase in about 7.3%, give or take. And the non-economically disadvantaged was an increase in about 7%, 6.9 and change. And so even though the numbers are different, the same, you know, percentage increase, you know, was still there. And so I'll do that with the rest of the sheet, just out of curiosity later. I do see several other board members. I've got, Board Member Bellamy has a question.
Yes, thank you. I have two, actually. One is a question that I'm sure the Board, prior to me being on, on the Board, has had a discussion. What constitutes, why, why are, so why are kids failing? I mean, what constitutes an F grade? I know, is it attendance that they're just missing so much that they are, they're just not there to do the work? Are they refusing to do the work? Are there remediations in place? Are there remediations in place in the schools? So I'm just looking to try to understand what the F really means, if you have that. And then my other question had to do with how many of, say, the, you know, the 465 11th graders that got Fs, how many of them are currently in the, are currently taking extended summer school classes? If we have that.
Mark, do you mind if I start a little bit? Interestingly enough, probably there's a multitude of reasons. But I just wanted to share with you, Member Bellamy, when we first started looking and the board started asking these questions three years ago to share the DNF data, we shared it. We used to just share it in the aggregate. And what we did was with the onset of the data dashboard, it was viewable by everyone by school. And then it became apparent where and in which classes. And I don't know if you were living in Ingrid, and I know that you had connections here, so you may have found it, it caused some uncomfortableness to have it out there. And it wasn't that we changed the data or did anything to data. It was just now accessible by everyone, not through a booklet on a shelf. And so we had to really socialize this with principals and teachers. And it became, when we shared the DNF data, there was a pushback that said, specifically that there was a war on Fs, that it said that I, it was Dr. Paramo at the time, so maybe it's not noticed. Dr. Paramo has a war on Fs in this district. And so I spoke with a lot of groups, and one of them was the AEA, the union representatives from all the schools. I met with them at East High and shared and just said that, you know, it's really not. I mean, it's just, it is what it is, it's just data. And then what we do is just say, "What is that telling us?" And we had a really good discussion. But what one school did, and this was West High, is some teachers and their counselors created an action research project that I just think is amazing. And it was shared, so it was in their second year, so they've been, shared it with me. And what they had done was they, and I think it's important to know this. And what we did was, what they did themselves is the counselors asked teachers a survey. What, you know, kids that have Fs in your class, and they looked at them, that they earned Fs, if you will, however we want to say it, what do you think was the reason? And the teachers gave reasons. And many of those reasons, and I have this report, I'd love to share it with you, was, you know, not doing homework, didn't show up to class. The counselor should have never scheduled him in this class. This class is, you know, not appropriate for him. Just different things like that that presented issues. And then the counselors asked the students, "Why do you have Fs in a class?" And the first response was, "I'm bored." You know, but if you took, you know, I think that's the first response for most teenagers. But you took that off, that kind of affective thing, and you looked at every other item. It said, "I'm afraid to ask questions in class. It goes too fast. I'm embarrassed in front of my friends. I don't have time to do work outside of class because I work." I mean, they were real-life, real experiences of students. And then they went back and showed those to the teachers. And their hearts were broken. And West High teachers then wanted to share what they had learned with others. And so we reported it out and shared it around. But then we asked the kids, "What is it that would take for you not to make that F then? If those are the things that you don't like?" So they gave some suggestions to their teachers. And I just wanted to point that out because there was a school that really looked at this and then dug deep down. I don't think there's one answer. But the study of that and understanding and coming to a place where they're understanding kids and where they are was the key to that. And so I don't think the answer is simple because it's all over the place, really. But the kids provided an eye-opening experience that touched the teachers' hearts and understanding. So then they started to allow kids to come in during lunch so they wouldn't be embarrassed to ask questions. They started really changing some practices to meet the kids where they were in regard to why they said they wouldn't meet. So that's just a little insight, and I wanted to share it because it was a very significant move in this direction and understanding that of just coming where kids were. With that, some of your other questions were in regard to the summer school. And Mark, go ahead, and Dr. Stock, take over, please.
I was so excited by what you were saying. I wasn't back in the next item. You just nailed it. That's a great explanation of the kinds of things that go on. Because I was thinking, we don't track, we don't necessarily know, to remember Bellamy's question, the why is a multifaceted answer, and it's different for many kids. But what we do know is we start by looking at where. Where are they getting the Fs? We go through and do course drill downs. We created data dashboards that principals can go in. We created alerts that alert principals on a regular basis right to their phones and their computers that say, "Within this two weeks, these are the students who have either not been attending school or are currently getting Fs." And so we provide more data to try to help principals know that, to be able to make better decisions.
And I think, and that's really, that's very helpful. I'm prayerful that more than West High School is looking at the data that way. Because that, you know, you know, I'm not, I'm, the data gives us, if we dig deep enough, we can change our practice. I'm not saying just excuse every kid. You're not, that's, it's not about that. It's about understanding the conditions under which they are having, under which we want them to thrive, that we have no control over. And I think, so I love that. I'd love to read that report as well.
Member Bellamy, and I do want to, that was just a report that they really significantly looked into it as an action research. But South High and Bartlett shared, they both had a significant amount of Fs in Alaska Native. And they shared with their peers as well what they did to impact them. And again, to Dr. Stock's point, the teachers were able to have the data, and then they had to ask themselves, literally, 40% of Alaska Native kids failed at South, but the number was 82 total, Alaska Native students. 40% at Bartlett did, but there were 450 kids. And so they really had to look at their own context about how is it that we do this? South High, if you talk to Dr. Bellamy, she shares, or Dr. Johnson, she shared that she named the students. The staff never knew. They knew the students, but they didn't know that collectively that there was a miss in what they were doing. And so they really paid attention. Bartlett really did a myriad of different interventions, and they both had success. So I want to be fair to all schools that they do look at it, but the process is to know who is part of that, which is key.
And that's great. I'm glad to hear that. And so, Dr. Stock, of the 465 kids, 11th graders that got Fs, how many of them are taking the extent? Do we know how many have enrolled in our extended program?
Well, all, well, we do know. I don't have it in front of me. But for every student who got an F was given the option. So if you're asking for a breakdown on grade levels, et cetera, we can get that data for you.
Okay. And these are all free, correct?
Yes.
For the summer? Yes. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next up in the queue is Board Member Marseth.
So, and I think I know the answer, but I just want a clarification. When we look at the number of Fs versus 2018 and for this last time and the year before that, are some of those Fs for the 1920, is that, could that be Fs from the third quarter that they didn't make up in the fourth quarter? I mean, could that be a combination of those years or the, you know, quarters, I mean?
It's, Dr. Stock, and to, great question. I believe that they're transcripted, so they would be the total semester grade.
Yes.
So to your question, it might be at the first, at the third quarter, they received an F and it didn't improve. Part of the incentives that the secondary used was that if you improved, you could take the higher grade, but if you went down, you could use your third-quarter grades. So yes, to your point that it, they semester, the end of the semester grade does consider the third quarter as well. So correct.
Yes.
Member Marseth.
Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Mitchell.
So a couple of just observations. The number of students every year from ninth through 12th grade goes down. So there are kids who are dropping out, and obviously it depends on the size of the cohort. But I assume that there still are kids dropping out every year. And the number of Fs go down. So it would be interesting to know if the number of Fs are going down primarily because those kids have dropped out. And then, Dr. Stock, you had mentioned that we have the same curriculum for everybody, and we just kind of figure out which, where the kids fit in. And I just wonder, when we look at the Fs, they are disproportionately, there are, you know, there are certain groups that are higher represented more significantly there. If part of it is, you know, to Dr. Bishop's point about being bored, I don't know that we want to absolutely dismiss that out of hand. Maybe in some cases, if we do have the same material for everybody and maybe there is an issue with the way we're doing it, is it relevant to those kids? Maybe we need to figure out a way to engage them in different ways. So just an observation, I guess.
Well, through the President, to Member Mitchell, one of the things that's interesting is that these things create more things for us to go research. So there's a piece of data, there's a piece of data coming to my mind right now that I did some analysis on attendance based on these ethnic groups, right? And as I go through and look at them, the one group that has the highest levels of chronic absenteeism was the Hawaiian Pacific Islander group. You'll also notice that there's a higher percentage of Fs there, showing some correlation between being in school and doing the assignments and getting the grades. Then it comes back to the next question that Member Mitchell brings up about, well, why is that? Is the work not engaging to them? Is, what are the reasons why? And we use the analogy of, if you've heard the phrase, the five whys. To get to root causes, you have to ask why multiple times to get into that. That brings the question, "Why this?" Well, then, because maybe there's attendance. Well, why attendance? Maybe they're bored. Why are they bored? So those are the kinds of things that we have to keep wrestling with. And if we're going to ever create an environment where this equity gap begins to shrink, which is our goal, we have to continue to get better at asking these questions. And they can't be asked in my office, right? They have to be asked at the next level, the next level. And teachers have to get to the point of asking them. What was exciting about Dr. Bishop's story to me was that the students were asking those questions. And that's where it really gets exciting and where you can start to make a difference.
I would like to, to Member Mitchell, that's intriguing. And we could follow a cohort through and find out, are we changing because of the cohort, like in statistic, like the death rate of the cohort? You know, it's not really people. But it's like the cohort shrinking, is it shrinking with a trend of the type of kid that doesn't leave? And so that is actually intriguing. And I'll spend some time this summer looking at that and come back to the board. That's a good point.
Thank you. I actually look forward to seeing that. Next up, a Board Member Hildy has her hand raised.
Thank you. So I just had two little questions. One, so if those kids have opportunities to increase their grade this month, will we see an increase in, or I guess a decrease in the number of Fs? You know, at another board meeting with an update, if they have the opportunity to raise those? Then my other question is, I really just get hung up on our demographic categories. Is there a way to, I know you can't change them, but can you select more than one? Like, if you're select two or more races, can you also select African-American or also select Native Alaskan? Is there a way to do that where our data can be more illustrative of our student population and thus more useful?
Member Hildy, I know that I will have Mike Fleckenstein report on that. That's actually, that question's been asked before, and there is a reason why some defaults are chosen. And we can certainly get that to you in the Board Connect, for sure. There is a specific protocol for those, if you will. But I've had others ask that question, that they really want to identify that two or more races in more detail so that we understand. So I do know that, and we'll get that in the Board Connect because I remember Mike Fleckenstein, our Chief Information Officer, sharing some information about that self-selection. And to you, Dr. Stock, if you had some.
I don't. I just was going to also apologize. My neighbor's running a chainsaw about 20 yards from my window. So if I get drowned out, I apologize. So that's what I was going to say.
Thank you.
And to your second, your second question, yes. We, they do have an ability to replace a grade, which in theory would increase the achievement of students and decrease the F. And we will bring you a final result after the June 30th meeting. Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Board Member Marseth has her hand up.
So I do have a question, and I like what we're talking about the whys and how it ends up being five whys. But I also want to ask, what are we actively doing to ask the why? And is it being asked on the front line? So it's okay to say, you know, "We did this, we did that." But what are we actively doing to ask those whys? And, you know, we don't have to answer that question now, but maybe that would be a quite, something we could incorporate in another board meeting. But I think it would be interesting because we always talk about it and what we've done. But I guess I just want to know what we're actively doing.
I'll just share a little insight, and just with a partner. And Member Marseth, you know this because you're active, but one of the partners with United Way is really that Wraparound Services that looks at students, and students are identified as being at risk and then work individually to mitigate, if you will, or assist with those reasons why. If it's transportation, if it's food, if it's after-school activities, if it's a tutor. We really try, that's the real theory behind that collective action as well. So we can share, that just came to my mind initially in regard to that work because it's specifically, it isn't in school, it's actually also out of school. So this big system of support in our community is going to be looked at as well. So we can bring some information back and pose that question to our principals and our teachers and administrators to just really have a global sense of that, about where we are, so that we can grow that.
Thank you.
And through the President, to Member Marseth, I would also say that every school has set aside, they have data teams, and they have days in which those teachers get release time in different schools to drill down into these data and ask those questions. They're different questions based on different schools because, as you can tell, the demographics and the needs and concerns across the district vary school to school. So the type of questions that they're digging into will vary. But all of our principals are expected to have those kinds of data teams that drill down. Sometimes it's centering on student interventions around, for example, students who are not reading well, et cetera. Sometimes it is SEL, sometimes it's behavioral issues, and there's tremendous amounts of work going on in behavioral data right now across the district. So I would just simply say those are going on in all the schools, and we can bring back to you some examples and greater detail around how that works.
Yeah, that would be great to hear from maybe what some schools are doing and how they're asking those questions, something we don't always hear. So that would be very appreciative.
And they can share with us what they feel is working better and not. You know, that they've had some experiences there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Members. And I just had two quick things. One was just, the first one is a question on, when can the board expect a graduation rate, even whether it is preliminary or after summer school, or when that might be able to be presented?
Thank you, Madam President. And the graduation rate, of course, is the latest reported because it is audited again by the state. We will finish those reports in July after June because work up until June 30th is counted. We have two weeks to present. We have two weeks to present the Oasis report. The state takes two weeks, gives us back an initial. So about mid-August, between all these sessions, we're able to give to our data analysis Carolyn Tix to come up with a ratio or a guess, if you will. Sadly, the state, this year didn't come out with a graduation rate till December, but generally the trend has been in October.
Okay, thank you. And then when the administration comes back with this presentation after the end of the four-week extended year, which would be interesting to see the numbers and how they, they move, could we add a category for sped, intensive and non-intensive, to see how maybe that category was affected with the online learning scenario of fourth quarter and how that might have impacted them?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
The intensive and non-intensive, the intensive is very different in the grade reporting. So that would be difficult to capture those data. We would probably go off of the individual IEPs because the outcomes are all different. But generally, the LD students, the ones that are, students are taking general courses, we could do whether they're, but generally the intensive would be really difficult to report because it's all individualized. But certainly the students with disabilities ratio that we present with the data to the state is absolutely easily, can be done.
Perfect, thank you. Do any other Board Members have any other questions regarding this goal monitoring dataset presented by the Superintendent? All right, not seeing any. And as Board Members go through and they digest this information and if they have more questions, please do not be afraid to ask whether it is in an upcoming meeting or through an email. You know, that is how we all improve is by, you know, understanding, you know, what we're looking at. And so, next up on the agenda is public testimony. And I just wanted to confirm with our Board Secretary Katie that we have no public testimony for tonight.
That is correct, Madam President. There is no public testimony signed up.
Thank you so much, Ms. Katie. And next up on the agenda is going to be our Superintendent update. So I will turn it back over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. We have just two brief items for you today. They are in regard to sports as well as planning for the school start. Additionally, the school start has an item under the non-action item that will be, go into more depth if the board desires. We can have the leads of the different activities, provide an update. But for sports, let's start there. As you know, and you've been hearing in the community, that our parks and rec and different sports organizations are beginning to start up. Understanding that those are specifically run sometimes by different clubs as well as, actually just by summer clubs. My, what I want to say also is that a lot of the kids, though, are in, say, the swim club and the coaches are our high school coaches and in the swim club. But yet then high school has a different requirement. And I wanted to share that, that any high school sport that is a high school sport with coaching and direction is through ASA and that's our sports organization. But there's some overlap in the community sports and we're seeing community sports open. So the question comes, when are school sports? And I would like to share that Dr. Johnson and her staff were invited to participate in the Alaska Sports Athletic Association's work in determining low minimum and high risk and that availability to practice out of season. The ASD will have mitigation and safety protocols that we're developing alongside of the states that matches our cities. And of course, similar to the Alaska Smart Start, ASA will have a document, but then we would lay that document, overlay that on our city and municipality, as well as the ability for the school district to maintain safe, healthy practices with kids. Schools can find the information on the ASA website and through their secondary directors in regards to where the work is right now. And we're also informing through that secondary education office, coaches directly. Specifically, Dr. Kirsten Johnson mentioned talking to volleyball and football, as well as cross-country, which are gearing up this summer for the sports season in the fall. Just want to let you know again, which I stumbled in trying to describe this, this issue out there, is although these kids are in the same sport, this governed differently depending on high school or local club. But ASA does not have jurisdiction on many of those youth activities that may currently be in operation. And those, those activities, similar to summer camps, things like that, are responsive to the city itself and their protocols. So the sports planning format is going to look like this and actually does look like this and it's continuing to be a work in progress. We are going to have open for high school practices on June 8th by ASA. So we want to be prepared to allow our teams to understand the protocols that are going to happen in ASD. So there'll be single-team sessions, multi-team sessions, pre-workout screening, lots of different indicators on our planning that is going to ensure the safety of both the coach, the supervisor, as well as the students. We want our parents to know that we have thought about those safety protocols to limit the spread of COVID-19, of course. So it's using that, that same format. There's ongoing work in this area. It hasn't been totally set out, but wanted the board to know that it's in progress. But some of the complexities of this in understanding how often will those levels change, and that's really left at the state level. And as you can see, there's been some announcements and then, you know, pulling back and changing some things. And many times this is frustrating, but really it was described to me today in a conversation I had with an official that if we were, we didn't understand six weeks ago where we would be today and six weeks prior to that, we wouldn't have fathomed where we would have been at that time. That this is such a changing scenario, changing state, literally and physically, that, that we need to, you know, just be able to, be able to adjust. And the key to any of this, whether it's in school or even with these sports, is the nimbliness that we can demonstrate as a district to be prepared and to move from risk level to risk level. In regard to the tracking of changes, we have, you know, just idea of having that on a website, having accessible, similar to how the state is making other information accessible. And then again, that would filter to our city and then filter to us. What is the criteria? That's the, the key question that everyone's asking and it hasn't specifically by the state in determining those risk levels as our city. We are basically, they, we're in, we're not at the highest levels of no risk at all. We're kind of in the medium and we'll be defining that through ASA as well as ASD as we move forward. And then who will approve the mitigation plans for the school district is a big question that ASA has. And of course, at, at our process with the school start, we have to turn in basically our, our plans to deed and of course, after they're, you know, given the approval stamp by the school board. And so knowing this, while ASA sets up rules and regulations for the fairness of sports and the safety of sports, the, the lion's share of this responsibility really is local because each of these is, then resides on the local context. Certainly you can imagine, Bush Alaska is flying into different communities more than ASD would. We could be self-contained and continue to play within our own community in the municipality. Whereas other school districts, in order to have their opportunities to play, would fly into 10 different villages that make up that school district. And then it's really up to those 10 different villages how they would come in. So just understanding that this work is coming. There is a, a good voice at the table for ASD as well as for smaller school districts and understanding that ASA won't have all the answers, that we'll, we'll funnel this down. But wanted the board to know that we're working on this. It is a, one of our priorities in secondary to really have our kids feeling. I think it was mentioned in, by Member Marsette, that it's imperative to our community that they're starting to feel as though some semblance of what they once knew is still a part of their lives. And so we're, we're working to, to get this done. Kirsten is available for questions after I'm done to, and even during the task force time, to be able to answer specific questions that you might have. She's the expert in, in what's been going on. What we have in, in front of us, again, I'm going to continue to have this just be a highlight of the report, because this is the work that is really focused on this summer with the working groups and such. And, and this was taken off the state website. This is their final Smart Start for Alaska schools. And they went away again from the, the red light, green light, traffic light to mountains, which really has the same theme behind it. And again, those blocks are still blank in low risk, medium risk and high risk. And again, that is for Department of Health and Human Services to determine, Dr. Zink. And once those decisions are made, it would be in collaboration again with our city. And we have a protocol set up with our city that Mayor Berkowitz and I, as well as our teams, will work together in determining those levels and those risk levels in our city, as well as then we would overlay what we, what is our capability in schools to keep kids safe as well, whether an outbreak was in one school or really had an outreach into other schools and other areas. So more work to come on that, but wanted the board to know that locally, it is in conjunction with the city and we have those lines of communication open. Jennifer Patronis, Director of School Nursing, is the context here and the core contact, rather, as well as Dr. Chandler, who works for the Department of Health for Anchorage, who has been informing them. So the information is going to be shared so that our community understands that we're, we're working in concert, both in our city as well as in our schools, to move forward safely. So Alaska Smart Start again, then details each of those different sections. And if you couldn't read it, it was the conditions of learning, the continuity of learning and the capacities of learning. And these items then are items to think about and they were designed by many, many stakeholder groups over about a four-week period. I believe some of our members through AASB were also involved in, in creating some of these levels and considerations, because they took in just ideas from all over. Many of our teachers were involved, our principals involved and administrators. So it's collective work there. And finally, we get to, to our Smart Start and our planning. And I'll just review this again. The School Start Task Force is really at the level of publishing, making decisions, running things by the different union groups that are in ASD to help us make decisions that we would then present to the board. And that task force takes input from some other groups so that they know at that level of work, the people that are the expertise in that area, how that information can flow back and forth. So there are a plethora of working groups that are really looking at all the different aspects about schooling and how to do schooling and low minimum and high risk areas around our district, everything from core content to grade level content, SEL items, equity items. And so this collective group and these working groups will report out to come up with an overall planning document for the board to understand with the mind's eye and as well as our employees and our parents and our students about how we can move forward in different risk levels and what is to be expected by the program. We did have the feedback, as the board knows, was in many different, as my kid, this is too much, I couldn't, can't take one more thing at homeschooling as a parent to where others were. This is not enough. This is not going to lead my child where I want him or her to go. And so we are being flexible and responding to that need, whether parents choose to have kids in school or really have a robust online program. If you could go back to the community that moved ahead too fast, the community advisory team, of course, is, is being formed. And Board Members will sit on the community advisory team and, and listen in with administration so that we can really have a broad context of what our community shares with us. A lot of times it's, it's good that we hear them and then can converse back and forth. And then also the Board Members can be a liaison back to the larger board when the board has questions in regard to the community. But it's really a vast array from, from government, military, city government, military, parents, schools, different entity groups and, and special interest groups and working groups that we already have, from special education to MECCAC, as well as our, our businesses and nonprofits. So Tom Roth can provide some updates into those that have accepted the challenge and to sit with us and to move along and be updated on the process as it moves along. We do still plan that the board receives an update and a solid as plan as we can have for your feedback with minor adjustments to present in public to our community. And we'll have that a month before school would start on August 20th. And of course, that's a date that we're going to publish and it's in non-action this evening, wanting our community to understand that we are making a request to change the start of school, to not have students interact with the, the public, general public who come to our voting places, over 60 schools are utilized, as well as provide an additional day for our teachers to prepare for being able to, to have that nimbleness in our instruction from being in school to possibly being called out of school again, as we were during the crisis this spring. We also are requesting November 3rd off and for the primary election as well. And we have communication that's posted on our website in regard to this planning document so that parents can also share the information along the way. We'll make it a hot topic so that if there's any questions, the board, as well as other community members, can really direct the, any, any questions back to the information that is most current at that time. And with that, I'd just like to close with just saying that, you know, that we are concerned with the events of late, not only with this virus, but also around the country in regard to our students and their ability to get an equitable, fair, just education by the Anchorage School District. And that is our mission and that will be our work and our new focus. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. At this time, do any Board Members have any questions for the administration based on the Superintendent update? All right, not seeing any. Thank you. So next up on the agenda, we have a whole list of non-action items. I hope Board Members have had a chance to take a look at them. If they have any questions, we've got some revision to board policies that are on their first readings. Are there any items that Board Members wish to pull at this point? I'm, okay, Board Member Hildy?
I'll pull the one that I moved to add, seven.
Okay, perfect. And then I also wanted to pull item number six, the ASD School Start 2021 Task Force. Just so Board Members know, that is going to be a recurring non-action item where we will continue to get updates from administration or from Board Members that are sitting on the committees until it comes time to move to an action item. And so we'll start with the first one. Board Member Hildy with the funding and installation of Joint Assembly and School District signs.
Thank you. So I was a little late to the party on this one, but there's some text messages going around and I thought, let's just bring it to the full board. And then there's no Open Meetings Act concerns and that just makes everything a bit clearer. So I'm going to need some help kind of plugging in things, but my understanding at this point is that we might need to... to, like there was money taken from a tr- the board travel budget and moved into a different category um because an assembly or either an assembly member or the assembly asked to partner would make some signs. I'm not exactly sure what the signs are, but they sound like a nice thing.
Can I, can I jump in and show? Can I, this is Dina. Um, can I just jump in and show you this?
Oh, well, the, I'll just say the, um, I'll just say the other concern and then I'm kind of done. Um, the other one is just I had a concern on installing and who's like responsible for them, like take up, set down, and I just want to make sure we don't have any liability issues. So those are just my two concerns is if we need to like do a memo to move the, uh, the funding part and then uh the liability concern. So, oh, that's all. That's all.
Okay, um, I don't know if um Board Member Marsete or um or anybody else, um, like uh Member Donley um was caught unawares. And so if somebody could please give kind of a, a high level update on what the process was, how it happened and what the outcome was, that would be fantastic.
And I'd be happy to do that. And then um Ms. Mitchell can fill in if she'd like or add her part. So um a couple of board members were approached by uh Meg Zalatell and Felix Rivera and um
Lynn Davidson.
Lynn Davidson, yes. And uh they came up with the idea that they wanted to do something to thank or um a message to thank uh the school district for everything that they had done. And so um in the process, it was uh decided that, that they would do these banners that they uh could do. Um, this was initiated by the assembly and then kind of passed on to the school district, which I wasn't happy about. Um, as far as the money to pay for them, I did, um, I, it should have been ran by the whole board and I'm sorry I did not do that. That's in hindsight. Um, but uh Katie said we did have an excess in um travel. Um, so therefore uh we could use that money if we wanted to, which is what ended up happening. Um, my thought was that we should have um secured the sites that those banners were supposed to go up onto before they were ordered. Um, but that didn't necessarily happen. I dropped off uh five of those banners to the municipality because it does have their logo on it and they are supposed to be responsible for putting up those five. And the others are the responsibility of the, the school board or those members that have said that they would uh look for places to put these signs up. So that's the whole story unless Ms. Mitchell has something to add.
Uh, am I unmuted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, I just wanted to um pull up the image again. It was the same um banner that we, I shared with you guys. I don't think it's the last meeting, but I think maybe the meeting before that. Um, and Katie, I just sent you the image, so I don't need to share my screen if you can pull it up if people just want to see what that looks like. Or I can share my screen and show people. But um I just wanted to show that to everybody again so that they had an image of what the banner is. And in terms of how it's going to be um um hung, uh, uh, Member Hildy, it's, has grommets on it and um the idea is to find basically um chain link fences to attach that to just, I, I, it's kind of similar to the school bond um signs we put up around the schools. But um I think it was actually a work session that we discussed this in and um the comment was made that maybe um we're, we're gonna find businesses around town. There were a couple already who have agreed to do this um who would be happy to hang this up and just thank the Herculean efforts of everybody in the ASD for everything that was done during the pandemic.
Um, Board Member Hildy, you had your hand up again?
Uh, and I don't, I think it's a great looking sign. I don't disagree. I'm sure everybody can find a spot to hang it, but my concern is still just the liability part. Somebody can fall hanging it, who's taking responsibility if it never gets taken down, uh if it blows off and goes into a car's, you know, window and obscures the view. If a business owner says, I'm gonna take it down, you know, they, time's up and they fall doing it. Um, you, usually board members don't install district property. And so that's a, I just need a liability answer. So that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, Lawyer Hildy. I was just gonna say fucking like a true attorney.
So I guess I'll.
There actually were two, two attorneys involved in this, but anyway, go on.
Yeah. Um, Board Member Bellamy.
So yeah, and, and uh, Member Hildy, you do raise some uh very good questions. And I'm gonna tell you, I was among the fir- I, I was contact, one of the people who were um contacted by the assembly. And, and um to tell you the truth, I've just got to retrain myself to think that way. I, I just was so excited that they were interested um and that um, you know, so it was a very organic process, but it, this is a reminder to me to, to uh think deeper and um not be so excited uh that, you know, to be in, you know, to, to uh do something that really looks good on the surface, but we've got to ask deep, deeper questions. So um in the future, uh not only will, I think we will probably need to come back as a um and, 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 and get guidance from, inform all members of the, on the board and get guidance from them. And then through that process, I think we would have had the answers that you're seeking, which I don't have. Uh, but I do, uh, do understand that they are important.
And I will tell you that they're in the back of my car right now and I'm not.
We paused, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say it and I don't, I may offend people and I apologize if I do, but I haven't been happy with this whole process. I haven't been happy with the fact, um, and if they hear it, that's fine, I don't care. Um, that the assembly brought this up and yet they kind of turned it over to us and said, hey, we have this great idea. Now you guys do it. Um, they didn't have any way to pay for it. Um, it, 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 I, it wasn't a well thought out idea and I had reservations and I should have, um, even though it was a great idea, uh, we shouldn't have moved forward without uh better communication.
Thank you for all the excellent comments. Board Member Hildy?
Um, and it's a great looking sign and I love the sentiment. So I'm glad our elected officials wanna um see how great our staff are doing. Just to um bring it to the, you know, the action part. So I think what we can do is do a memo um just to get the money in the right spot. And then, you know, we've done like school swag things, right? So we're just gonna, those signs are uh a swag item, a memento from this um whatever is happening in our city right now. You know, there's just some craziness happening, you know? So uh we can move forward and um, but just um, you know, my concern is liability always. So um if board members have any other feelings about that, that's, we now speak now, I guess. But um, but we'll just get the, the budget memo maybe um for the next meeting and just dot the i's and be good, I think, to go if, if everybody's okay.
And I was gonna ask uh Dr. Bishop, there are some places like Central Middle School that has that chain link fence on the, on the road there that would be an excellent place to hang those. Um, so I was going to uh check with Dr. Bishop to see if possibly there were some uh schools that had high access that we could actually put some of those up if.
All right, um, a memo can be done for the fund transfer and I don't have the answer to the liability question. And Dr. Bishop, I see a hand.
Thank you, Madam President. So um within your policy, you don't necessarily uh need a memo to move that money because you, you can create your own budget. Uh, would you like this at the finance meeting as a budget item? Or do you literally want to make a memo for this meeting? Because it, it's not um a necessary part of your policy, but in your finance, that's where you uh would make your budget. And so maybe in that meeting, we might do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing a thumbs up there that that'd be, we'll just touch on it at the next Finance Committee meeting in two weeks.
I'll put it on the agenda.
Jim will be prepared. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Um, all right, um barring any other blue hands, um we'll go ahead and move on to the next topic, um, eh, which is the ASD School Start 2021 Task Force Update. And I believe uh Dr. Bishop, I, you said you had uh some administration members that could give some real quick updates on their individual components?
Thank you, Madam President. We'll just uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Mark and he's gonna just uh introduce, uh, I shared the leads. I'll, I'll uh introduce them again so that the board can become familiar so that when you have questions, when we present things, if you're not clear, please uh reach out to any of these uh members uh for the items that they have um uh pre- prepared uh, you know, and, and made public uh because we certainly want uh the board to have a really uh grand understanding because I know that you interact with constituents um all the time and we want you to be prepared. Here you go. Mark?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And uh through the Board President to the board, uh, thank you for an opportunity to share this real brief. So Dr. Bishop has shared this graphic a couple of times, which kind of explains it. The top, the School Start Task Force uh will be led by me, facilitated by the Deputy Superintendent. We have multiple departments from across the administration, all the divisions represented. There is some association representation from AEA and Totem. And our goal as a task force is to synthesize a lot of the information coming out of various working groups who are building all of these ideas and things for the fall start. Our task is to put in front of the superintendent so that it can be discussed with the board president prior to putting in front of the board by mid-July. Our goal is to put a recommendation out there that would cover everything from low risk to medium risk to high risk and, and whatever variations it might in between. It will not be 100% finished work in July. So I guess I'm trying to lower expectations here because there's so much work involved. Our goal is to put a recommendation in front of you that's a framework of what it's gonna look like. The work will continue. All summer, teams will be building curriculum, building platforms, doing all the work. So our goal is to put in front of you what it's gonna be and then they'll keep working on it based on your approval. So with that, the uh Dr. Knutson will report in a, in a moment on the working groups and Mr. Roth will report on the Community Advisory Team. And we'll go to the next slide and I'll give you the highlights of the task force. So this is an internal planning group. And as I've mentioned, our goal is to put a recommendation to the superintendent and then ultimately to the board. We don't get, of all the questions we get asked right now, the one we get the most is what are you gonna do in the fall? You know, what's gonna happen? Are we gonna have school? Are we not gonna have school? What's school gonna look right, look like? And so what we've put in place are a series of ASD requirements that we're, we're distributing out to the groups that have things in there like whatever plans come forward have to be flexible. They have to provide multiple opportunities to turn on a dime and go from closed to open or back to closed based on the level of risk in our city at that time. So those are the, some of the example of one of the parameters that the teams are working off of. These teams include, but they're not limited to, a, a reporting project group on athletics and activities as, as Dr. Johnson and her teams continue that work. There's a whole group that's working on all of the intervention needs that are gonna happen as a result of the pandemic loss. Uh, we, we anticipate uh academic loss at some level that would exceed normal summer loss because we've had so much time out of school. So we have to look at issues regarding equity. There's a lot of research emerging about the social, emotional and the trauma involved in all of the mental health pieces that are required because of everything going on in our community. Of course, the academic piece and then the multi-tiered systems of support regarding levels of intervention for students who are far behind. In addition, we have a tech council that will be chaired by uh CIO Mike Fleckenstein and Kathy Moffett, who are working with regards to how overall uh remote instruction, online instruction, how all of the different aspects with technology all are become integrated. If there's one thing we've learned this summer, when we triple the number of students who are taking online courses for advanced to get ahead in their coursework, we have, we have recognized that there's a need. So their tech council will be working on the future of how all that fits into instruction. In the meantime, we've got groups working on device distribution, purchasing computers, doing the one-to-one initiatives. And then there are groups working on what we're calling the Blended Learning Environment, which really is that opportunity for every teacher, pre-K through 12, to have to go from being in brick and mortar one day and the next day being at home in a remote environment. How do we do that seamlessly? And of course, a pre-K through 12 online learning, we anticipate a significant number of parents that may not be willing, given the health risks, to send their children to school, even if our city says it's low risk. So how do we keep that third grade family who wants to stay connected to ASD and wants to be affiliated with their homeschool eh in their elementary and doesn't really want to go to some other homeschool programming but wants to stay attached, but I'm not willing to send my kid to school yet? How do we serve that family? And so those are the, the groups that we're working on. And with that, I'll turn it over now to Dr. Knutson, who will talk a little bit about how the working groups are going, or will be going.
Thank you, Dr. Stock, and good evening, board. Um, just to start off, to talk to you about the purpose of what the working groups are. And really, the purpose is to support successful implementation of teaching and learning within the low, medium and high risk situations that may present us in the fall. And this requires that we have, that we support both the adult professional learning and the course content that can be delivered in a blending learning model. And so that's really the core of our work and then working off of what Dr. Stock mentioned in those parameters. Um, so the first task that we did in this work is to identify a platform that we could utilize district-wide that would work with our current system, um, provide consistency for staff, students and our caregivers, since if we're going in and out, we need to think about our parents as teachers um as well and how would a system work for them. And then it also allows for collaborative online environment where we could share resources and really be able to, to, to work and that social, emotional learning is important both in face-to-face and online. So how could we have a system that would help us do that? And so Canvas was chosen as the platform, which I believe was shared at the last board meeting. And we use Canvas to some extent at all levels during school closure. So teachers, all teachers across the grades have familiarity with it to differing degrees. So, so there, there is a baseline there for folks. Um, once this was selected, we pulled together an advisory team that was composed of teachers, principals, um, and district office administrators. And the purpose of this was really to get input from people uh that will inform our implementation. So what are those considerations around professional learning, um, courses? What do we put in Canvas? What do, what does the um template need to look like? Ideas from people that have been using it and people that may not have been using it that can provide another perspective on what the needs are. Um, and so they provided that information for us. And this really will put, inform some of the work um that the working groups will do and we'll revisit with that advisory group periodically in order to ensure that um we're on the right track and we're listening and we're really understanding what the needs are as we move forward. Following their advisory meeting, um, a letter from Dr. Stock was sent to all educators on Thursday, May 21st. And this was um the day before um teacher's last day. And the purpose of this was to communicate the decision about the Canvas platform district-wide, but also to give educators an opportunity to apply for um participating on work groups to help us with the curriculum in the fall. And so um with that application out there, we have over 300 educators that have applied to participate on work groups, which um was a fantastic, strong um, you know, result of, of, of putting it out there for folks, um especially given that we have over, you know, 1,600 people registered in ASDSA. We have teachers that are teaching extended school year. I mean, our teachers are doing a lot of work right now, yet there's still a desire to really influence and have an impact on what we do in the fall, which is really exciting to me. Um, so that's what we've done up to this point. And our next steps over this next two weeks will really to be establish those purposes, priorities, timelines and processes that will really guide this work group. We need to have it crystal clear what the expectations are so that people, we can set them loose and they can do what they do best and, and really figuring out what our students need and building our curriculum that's guided with our academic plans. Um, we will also finalize the list of work groups that are needed to support the curriculum shift. As Dr. Stock showed on the other slide, content areas, alternative schools, world As Dr. Stock showed on the other slide, content areas, alternative schools, world languages programs, all the different areas that we're really going to need to look at to move curriculum into an online platform that we could use both in blended when we're in school as well as if we went to straight online. And then finally, Teaching and Learning Department will work collaboratively with AEA to select educators that have applied for this to serve on the work groups based on the needs that we have once those work groups are finalized. So those are our next steps that we are planning to complete in the next two weeks. And then the next steps will be really setting people out and starting to do the work informed by task force and the community advisory group. So that concludes my part and I am going to turn it over to Mr. Roth.
Thank you, Jenny. Good evening, everybody. Tom Roth, the Chief Operating Officer. And for the next couple of minutes, I'd like to talk to the community advisory team. I know Dr. Bishop has a briefly addressed. So, so the advisory team really is intended to be a broad representative group from the community. The, this, this team is still in formation, but I've got a number of very accomplished individuals who've agreed to participate as members on the panel, just to, to give you a brief view of that. As you can see in the chart, the, the groups that will be represented. I've been in communication with the presidents of both the Anchorage and the Chugak Eagle River Chambers of Commerce, who are both very excited to be participants. From a medical perspective, Mr. Jim Reinecke, who is the chief nurse at Providence Hospital, as well as I've reached out to Dr. Bruce Chandler, who is the chief medical officer for the Anchorage Health Department. We, we've had contact and confirmation from Ms. Bonnie Gates from MECCAC, Dr. Andre Thorne, who represents, or is a director of the Multicultural Center at the UAA. Again, another very accomplished individual who's going to be participating. So not only these people accomplished in their own rights, but they're also very well-connected in the intent here. The purpose, as mentioned, is that this advisory team provide informed input to the School Start Task Force. But I think more significantly, because of their contacts and their, their influence in the community, they can also reach out to and get input from the broader community and communicate that to the task force. So to talk very briefly about the method, I, I think what we're looking to, to do is start sometime in mid-June. And the purpose for that is it, it will give the, the School Start Task Force an opportunity to, to provide some detail to the options that Dr. Stock talked to, the low, the medium and the high-risk options. At which point, we can present those draft options to the task force or to the team, excuse me, and start to receive their input on those three options. The plan is to do this virtually. And we're not really looking, in, in this example, we're not trying to get consensus, although where we, we see consensus on the group, you know, we'll, we'll certainly take note of that. But more importantly, we want to capture all of the input, all the thoughts from the very diverse Anchorage community because we understand the importance and the significance of the district across the community. So as we gather this information, it will be presented to the, the School Start Task Force. Also, you know, during the, the participation or the, the development of options, Dr. Stock will, will be participating in the community advisory team. And vice versa, we will ask certain members to observe and witness the, the School Start Task Force process. So I think at this point, that, that concludes my update here. I think at this point, we are hoping for questions and comments from the Board.
Thank you to everybody who has presented and just given us a bit more of a mind's eye of how this is all coming together. I know I, you know, certainly appreciate it and I'm sure others do as well. Do any Board members have any questions at this point? There, they popped up. Okay. Board member Bellamy.
Okay. So thank you, guys. That was a good, that was very good. It was very helpful for me to see that we are going about this in a very mindful, purposeful and inclusive way. So I guess I don't have a question. I just have a, have a, you know, just a thank you and an acknowledgement that as Board members, a clarification, that, that as Board members, we are going to be, we are, we are, we may serve on these committees, correct? Are we, are we, do we have a, I know I've already heard from Mr. Roth. And so what about other Board members? Are, is that, are we going to do those assignments? Or have you done those yet, Madam President?
No. So the only one right now is I have assigned you as a school board representative to the community advisory team. But I've also reached out and asked Board Member Marsette to kind of be an alternate on that one as well because I know as these meetings, you know, pick up and go and there's just a lot of information, it'd be good to, you know, just make sure we have it all the way covered. But from what I understand, the school board representation is only on this community advisory team. That's where we've got, you know, you know, just our own, you know, broad connections and stuff like that and where our voice, you know, might be useful. And so, and you know, obviously as a board, we will be getting these updates, you know, every couple of weeks, you know, as an entire board. And so, does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam President, to, to add on to that, to speak to Tom Roth's last point, we're designing kind of a system of when we upload information and share information and give those reports, that there'll be a cross-section of folks that although I'm not kind of in that, making that, that I'm observing this group and then this group is observing this group. So there'll be some triangulation of information so that it can make sense for folks. So it, it's not going to be exclusive of one group or another. But during certain times of updates, Tom Roth and Mark Stock have set times to, to switch. It's not all the way fully planned out, but the idea is again, that broader sense of, of understanding so that when we do bring it back to the Board, that those members who serve on those committees can also share in under, helping explain that understanding from the community view or the task force view and, and others.
Okay. Thank you. Member Donley, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam President. I see under the School Start Task Force, we have the Anchorage Education Association and, and the Educational Support Personnel groups listed, but I don't see representatives of the folks that have to actually sanitize and clean our schools. And as a parent and as the son of a public health nurse, I want them to be very much involved in this process also because they're our front line of defense against disease spreading among our, both our students and our students bringing things home to their families. So I was wondering what invitations have gone out to those folks and how, what level are they become involved?
So through, through the President to, to Member Donley. That, that's a great, great question, great observation. So to be sure, I, I'd like to reassure the Board that both, both the, the Senior Director for Maintenance and Operations, Mr. Darren Hargraves and Mr. Rob Holland are Director of Operations. Frankly, all the senior administrative staff have been absolutely and totally engaged in, in this from the start. And they're also very much engaged in the School Start Task Force in, in all aspects. So I, I appreciate that call-out, Mr. Donley. But, but rest assured, all, all those people are very much engaged in this process.
Well, is there an invitation going to go out to Local 71 to see if they might want to get involved?
I don't have that. Dr. Bishop?
Yeah, I, I mean, we'll bring this back and, and have, talk through that and consider it. For, for these items, they are directly, the, the two parent and student interfacing with the functions of the actual instruction of the school. And therefore, they were invited to that level with the school task force. The conditions of the school is held through other working groups that are designed through the business side. This one was to push up specifically the working group information in regard to the focus of the programs at this time, which would involve our aides, our special education aides, as well as those that interface with the community directly in registration, things like that. But we can bring that back for consideration and, and discuss it with the, the teams that are actually doing the work.
I think the ability to make our schools either in the yellow, green or red zones, low risk, medium risk or high risk is going to be very closely related to the wonderful jobs that our sanitation folks are able to do. I think they might have really crucial input into the ability to keep our schools in the low zone.
Understood. Thank you. And again, the focus of, of that is primarily the instruction side, but we'll take that in consideration and then bring back to the Board how those groups are, are involved in those subset categories.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing any other Board members' hands raised at this point. And as I mentioned before, this is going to be a continual non-action item that will likely get pulled every single time so that we can continue to have these very important discussions as everything is developing and, you know, unfolding over the summer. So I'm very much appreciative to the administration and the Board members for the information and asking good questions. I don't have any other items that were pulled from the non-action items. So we're going to go ahead and continue on down the agenda. Again, I don't have any public testimony. So the next item up is our school board and administration comments. And I know that Board Member Bellamy, I would like to offer you the first shot.
Thank you. And if I can indulge the Board just a, just a few minutes. I know that many of you may have, have not had a chance to read the superintendent's letter. And I have asked her for permission to read it, to, to make it part of our record and to also make sure that, that the community understands that we are, we are not just aware of COVID-19 and its impact and, and to, to the most vulnerable among us, but that we also understand that the events in the world are also very impactful. So as a board, our process takes us a little longer to come up with a, a statement or letter of record. But I, I just think that Dr. Bishop's letter warrants. So I had, and I did ask her if I could read this and I, if you guys will just indulge with me. It was posted later today, so you might not have had the opportunity to, to take a look at it. But I think, I thank her. I thanked her and I'm thanking her again for, for being courageous to stand up for our children of color and to make sure that all of us understand that the work of the Anchorage School District is for all of our kids. And we do take issues such as racial justice, the injustice of it all. We take justice in general, making sure that our kids have opportunities and all of the things that they need to be successful. So this letter is written to the Anchorage community. Dear Anchorage community, the tragic killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis, Minnesota and others like it deepen my resolve for change as they have a profound impact on our students, staff and the entire ASD community. Despite being thousands of miles away, these events and their repercussions affect all of us in unique and personal ways. While there's no easy solution to solving these, on, these longstanding racial injustices, I am certain that the education, that education will always play a role. High-quality education for all students is one of the best forms of equity. As one of the most diverse school districts in the country, ASD has a tremendous responsibility to teach and model inclusion and equity and justice to all students and staff. I did add justice there. Within ASD, that starts with placing a caring, compassionate teacher in front of every student, honoring diversity and treating everyone with dignity and respect while ensuring educational achievement for all. This is not a small task, but one for which we cannot afford to give up. Learning to be open-minded and respectful of diversity is a deeply individual lesson requiring a lifetime of reflection and empathy. As adults, it is our job to model this behavior for our young students. And they will follow our example. Dr. Bishop encourages students, parents and our staff to navigate and interrogate these recent events of racial injustice and inequity with open, open dialogue, patience and empathy. They are never easy, but they are necessary. So if you see or hear someone who is angry or hurting, reach out to them with an open heart. Sometimes just listening is the first step toward healing. ASD Hotline, Help Line, 742-Help is, is an excellent source that can assist our community with a variety of needs. Dr. Bishop also writes, and I quote her, her words, "As a white woman who has not experienced the full impact of this event in a historical context or personal understanding, I am somewhat apprehensive to share my thoughts." Unquote. However, I felt it necessary to stand for students of color and share that as superintendent of the Anchorage School District, I will renew my commitment to the success of all children in light of the horrific events that took place in Minneapolis last week. All means all in ASD. So I wanted, again, I think we, during these times of more uncertainty, pain, our kids, our, our kids, whether they live in Minneapolis or Seattle, wherever, wherever they go, they are going to have to deal with, with what's happening in the world. And we have got to create that safe space, that understanding, not just among the Board, but in this whole community. So I thank you. And Board, we have a lot of work to do. We work hard. You guys, we, our intent is a great intent, but we have to look at the impact, the impact of what we do and how we do it and making sure all of our kids are included. So I thank you for your patience.
Ms. Margot, thank you. Dr. Bishop, thank you for the letter. Just thank you. Any other Board members care to share any more comments? All right. I don't see any other hands up. Thank you to everybody for a very good afternoon and series of meetings tonight. We do have a lot of questions to keep asking and answering for our children. And I continue looking, to look forward to working with all of you as we do that. Our next meeting, we have a joint meeting with the Assembly on June the 12th. And our next regular session meeting is June the 16th. And at this time, oh, I do see one hand that slipped in. Board Member Mitchell.
I, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate that letter as well. And I just looked in my email again. I don't know how, I don't seem to have it in there. But I really appreciate also the reference to compassionate communication and listening because I think that goes a long way. And if we can model that in our schools, that could go a long way to a lot of healing in, in this country and in this world. So I really appreciate that in particular. So I really appreciate that in particular.
Indeed. I don't know if the letter has gone out by email as of yet, but I do know that it is posted.
It's posted on the website.
Yeah, it's on the front page of the website.
Yeah.
Board Member Marsette.
I do think, I mean, thank you, Dr. Bishop. Very well said. I think it mirrors the, the thoughts of all of our staff, the board. But I do think it's important, not necessarily resolution, but I think the board needs to write a letter also and express our sincere commitment to our students and, you know, all is all. And I, I would hope that we can do that.
And, uh, Dr., I mean, I'm sorry. Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
So at the, at our next communication meeting, I plan to have a draft of a letter for the board to look at and decide how we're going to move forward with that. So in keeping with our process, we're going to take it to the Communications Committee and then to the full board.
Thank you. Thank you very much to everybody. Look forward to meeting everybody again on the, at the committee meetings and at the 12th and the 16th, you know, as a whole board. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Everybody have a wonderful, wonderful night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.